Is that what they're doing?
Yeah.
I said, I said. I don't want.
Is that what they're doing? Yeah.
I have to watch him stream.
Yeah.
Do a hundred of all the amazing.
We could do like a hermit crab.
It's going through them. She should be good.
That's insane.
Go back up to. No, no, that's. Yeah.
Mayor, I believe we are as ready as we're gonna be, sir.
Town clerk, good to go. Excellent. Good evening. I call this August 12th, 2025 meeting in the Morrisville Town Council to order. I'll let you all know that Councilmember Reba Dye will be absent tonight. Councilmember Fender will be participating remotely, which means she can participate in the discussions, but she will not be voting on any items. And Councilmember Strongness Johnson plans to join us in just a few minutes. Thank you to those here in person with us tonight, those watching via livestream, and those who are watching recording of this meeting. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and into the future, is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Officer Thompson is our sergeant at arms for this evening's meeting. Thank you for your attendance. And this evening, I have the honor of leading our invocation. After a wonderful Morrisville event this past Saturday, our community once again showed the spirit that makes Morrisville so special. Tonight and in the years ahead, let us come together in our shared commitment to guide our town's growth with intention and care. May we approve policies and take actions that enhance the quality of life for all our families and foster a supportive environment where businesses, large and small, can thrive. Let us always strive to be welcoming and inclusive, ensuring that everyone feels part of our brighter future, no matter where they come from or what language they speak. Together, let's keep Morrisville moving forward. All who are able at this time, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, I'd like to request that council consider moving our consent agenda to after item 11, which is new items, as Councilmember Strongness Johnson may wish to ask a question about one of our consent items, and she expects to be here approximately at 6:45. And additionally, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to share at this time? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion and second to adopt this evening's regular agenda with the movement of the consent agenda, please?
I make a motion to approve this evening's agenda with the change of moving the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion from Councilmember Rao, second from Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries your names to 4-0. Now we're going right to item eight, which is proclamations. We will have no proclamation read during the meeting, but I would like to acknowledge two which will be read outside of our meeting at a later date. Those are to recognize India Independence Day, and the second is to recognize Senior Citizens Day. Now we're at item nine. Next on the agenda is Morrisville Speaks Public Comment. I'd like to ask Town Clerk Burtling if there's anyone signed up to speak.
There is no one signed up to speak.
Okay, we give people in the audience the opportunity to speak for up to three minutes on any subject of their choosing. If they didn't sign up, that's fine. Does anyone wish to address this body at this time? Okay. We'll move on to the next. As a reminder though, we encourage the submission of written comments as they offer a valuable way for community members to share their feedback at later time. We have one public hearing scheduled for this evening. We now invite Economic Development Director Tiffany McNeil to the podium. Council is scheduled to vote on this item tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council.
Good evening.
The purpose of tonight's agenda item is to seek approval of the resolution authorizing economic incentive grant in accordance with the town of Morrisville's economic development incentive policy.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Again, the purpose of tonight's agenda item is to seek approval of the resolution authorizing economic incentive grant in accordance with the town of Morrisville economic development incentive policy. So action is needed to formalize the package of incentives discussed and authorized by the town council in closed session during May 27th, 2025 regarding Project Anchor, which is now identified as Coriolis Pharma, Pharma U.S. Coriolis is a premier partner for drug product development, analytical services, and manufacturing services across a vast array of biological therapeutic modalities, and they're based in Germany. Coriolis plans to establish a U.S. headquarters right here in Morrisville, and they plan to locate in the Spark Nova building at 4877 McCrimmon Parkway. They will operate a state-of-the-art research facility at this location. Here at that site, they will house 50 new full-time jobs and plan to be at full staff within the five years of operations with an average wage of at least $150,000. And their anticipated capital investment, new capital investment, is $10,812,000, $812,000. The town will realize a significant increase tax revenue annually. This project does align with the town of Morrisville's strategic plan, specifically Goal Six regarding economic prosperity by promoting a business-friendly environment to diversify the economic base and create job opportunities for an educated, ready workforce in our community. The town of Morrisville has established an economic incentive policy that provides incentives up to 1.5% of capital investment for headquarters projects, creating a minimum capital investment of $10 million paying above the county's average wage. On July 22nd, Coriolis announces its intentions to locate in the town of Morrisville. We have already provided an incentive contract, a draft incentive contract agreement for this project, and it outlines the terms and provisions of a 1.5% incentive for a minimum payment of $162,190.50 over eight-year, excuse me, in eight grant payments. That's totaling $20,723.81 per payment over eight years. Here with us today, we have Amy McDonald. She is the site consultant for the project. I'll introduce Amy.
Good evening, everybody.
I'm, as Tiffany said, Amy McDonald. I'm with KSM Location Advisors based in Indianapolis, Indiana. I was designated by the Coriolis team to be their representative here tonight since they were here for the exciting announcement at the end of July. And so on behalf of Johannes and Frank and Sylvia, Michael, and also Michaela, who will be relocating here from Germany to manage this new US headquarters location, they all send their greetings to all of you. And I just wanted to reiterate on behalf of them how excited they are to be the anchor tenant in the Spark Building, and just how much time and effort and consideration was put into this decision to locate in Morrisville in the United States. And they're very excited about the decision and very excited about the life sciences ecosystem that they're gonna be a part of here. So thank you very much. If anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Excellent. We appreciate it. Did anyone have any questions or comments at this time? I'd like to recognize Mayor Potem Daramilla.
Can you send more of these quite often? Thanks for...
Yes.
That's a great answer, yes.
Okay.
I can't find my card.
Councilmember Rao?
I just want to thank you for all the script work. And I think it's just really exciting what we've been able to build with our life sciences cluster here in Morrisville. So thank you.
Excellent. So we're scheduled to have a public hearing tonight, so I'll go ahead and declare that open at this time. Town Clerk Bertling, is there anyone signed up for this public hearing?
There's no one signed up at this time.
Okay. Is there an audience who wished to sign up but failed to? And would like to address this body for three minutes on this subject? Okay. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Strongness Johnson.
I'd like to be recognized so I can vote in tonight's meeting, please? Because I just joined a little bit late, so apologies. And we are very excited about all the good things coming to Morrisville, so...
Very good point. So Councilmember Strongness Johnson arrived. I wanted to ask you real quick, is there anything on the agenda that might cause a conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest this evening?
No conflicts, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll close the public hearing? Make the motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Strongness Johnson. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries 5-0 unanimously. Is there any discussion on this item? Or any comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt this item. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson.
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-287-0 of the Morrisville Town Council authorizing an incentive grant agreement with Coriolis Pharma US Inc.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Strongness Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 5-0. Once again, welcome. Thank you so much. And thank you to our staff. This was always a lot of hard work behind the scenes to make these connections and these collaborative partnerships. So we really appreciate all of that from the whole team. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we changed the agenda, so we'll keep on going. We will do number 11, and then we'll circle back to consent. We have one new item scheduled this evening. We now invite Brandon Zudima, Town Manager, to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We are here tonight to request a First Amendment to the Development Services Agreement that the town currently has with Sing Development LLC. Also, I would point out that Avi Grewell, our partner through all of this, is here in case there are any questions for him. What we're seeking tonight are really two administrative adjustments to the Development Services Agreement. One relates to the increasing the authorized amount for design work. You may recall that we agreed to a pre-development agreement that preceded the Development Services Agreement. In that pre-development agreement, there was an authorization and agreement for us to compensate Sing at 7% of the overall design cost for their work in coordinating, excuse me, that work with subcontractors and others involved in that process. So that was amended once as a PDA amendment. That PDA, the pre-development agreement, has essentially now ceased to exist or expired because of the adoption of the Development Services Agreement. So on the advice of council, we are instead gonna add that language into the Development Services Agreement. So we're asking for a slight increase in the authorized amount there because of about $186,000 worth of additional design work. That's largely around the value engineering efforts that have been made and some other adjustments. 7% of that would be $13,027. And so that'll be highlighted in the Development Services Agreement. It's also identified in the resolution that's before you. The second piece that we are looking for is that as this design occurred, the Development Services Agreement specifically identifies the parcels that will be utilized for the cottage retail, because those, again, will be owned by Sing, whereas the rest of the park will be owned by us. And during the course of development, those parcels just shifted slightly in where they are on the site plan. So because of that, we had to redraw those boundaries and update those in the Development Services Agreement. So that's also included along with your packet as to what that language will be to amend those parcel descriptions. That is the two changes that will be impacted by this proposed resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about this? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
So I believe we have this for action on the 26th. Wanted to bring it to unite in case there were any questions. Try to answer those or come back if we needed to. But I believe it's scheduled for action on consent on the 26th.
Okay. I apologize. I see that now. Okay. So no questions at this time?
Great. Thank you very much.
Speaking of consent, so I'll re-circle back to that. So there are four items on this evening's consent agenda. It's a resolution authorizing a Fifth Amendment to the MOU with Wake County for a new solid waste convenience center. Resolution appointing members to the SAC, which is Senior Advisory Committee, and PZB Planning and Zoning Board. Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Morrisville Community Emergency Response Team. And resolution amending the town council meeting schedule. Would any member of the council wish to pull any item for discussion? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Strongness Johnson at this time.
Yes. I would like to pull the item 6A, authorizing a resolution for Fifth Amendment to the MOU with Wake County for a new solid waste convenience center.
Okay. Your name and your role for the record, please. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem. Councilmembers Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. I have a few questions.
Yes.
First of all, this is very exciting that you're bringing this to us tonight. And it's my understanding that this is a time-dependent item as well as Wake County is looking to move this project along this month, if possible. You know, dependent on us, the town of Morrisville.
That is correct.
This project has been in progress for many years. And what it effectively is, is the Wake County Recycling Center in Morrisville today is small and limited in its capacity to accept materials. And the proposed project is to expand that significantly to offer even more materials for collection and recycling. And the initial agreement was to flip. Morrisville would take land where the recycling center is today, and Wake County would take ownership of the land where the public works facility is. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So now the town has identified and secured a property for the public works facility that is not on either one of these parcels. And we are looking to also amend this agreement so that Wake County can expand. But we're changing the terms in the sense that we're not selling. We're actually leasing the land. We are providing a little different footprint because we won't need two facilities. We'll just need the one main one with the land that is not yet determined for use. And that is a significant difference in the agreement. Is that...
That is correct. And we have also to maintain the existing public works site the best that we can.
Yes. And there are a few functions that will remain at the current site, such as storage of materials for road maintenance and some other...
And a warehouse building as well.
That's right. That's right. So I just wanted to establish that this is a significant change, that we are... The town is gaining a benefit with Wake County providing better service to the residents of not only Morrisville, but the region. And we are also able to maintain some of our functionality at the site. I'd like to next turn to the agreement itself and ask a question or two.
Sure.
So I believe this is the Fifth Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding, which is MOU. And there is general conditions. The... I believe Wake County in item E will proceed with the design and construction of the West Wake Solid Waste Facility and associated roadwork improvements, including providing a driveway access to the town's existing public works facility. So would that maintain the current driveway? Or would that have a change in that access point?
So there'll be a new constructed driveway that lines up with the Signal and International Drive that will provide dual access, access to the convenience center and access to the existing public works facility.
Okay. And then the item F says the town offers to lease a mutually agreed portion of the Morrisville property to the county for construction of the Wake, West Wake Solid Waste Facility. So that's the change of purchase to lease.
Yes.
Okay. Then it says in item F, "The county shall develop, plan, design, construct, own, operate, and maintain the West Wake Solid Waste Facility. The ground lease shall be developed and mutually agreed upon by and between the county and the town for the external care and maintenance of the ground surrounding the Western Wake Facility." So that will be at the expense of the county for that facility.
That's correct.
So one of the things that I thought about upon reading this is that the lease is for a term of 40 years. And I'm trying to quickly remember which item that is.
It says it in the same item F.
Okay.
A 40-year term is proposed for the ground lease.
Okay. One of the concerns that I have with the lease is the liability rights to the town. If the county does vacate after 40 years or upon an earlier agreed term based on the discussions, will the Wake County site have underground tanks?
For the convenience center? No.
No, no, no. Western Wake Solid Waste Facility, will they have underground tanks?
They will not have underground tanks.
They will not have underground tanks, so...
They will not. And some of the... So these are very general terms at this point and general conditions. Ultimately, there will be an ILA that we execute with all the official final details of the project. They already have been put on notice and aware that any environmental hazard or conditions would be taken care of by them at the end of the term. And we would conduct an environmental assessment at that time and do any cleanup efforts at that time that they would have to take care of.
Is that identified in this MOU?
It may not be, but there are so many terms that aren't, because this is strictly just talking about the start of the project and giving them the right to move forward with coming back for a special use permit and things like that, that we haven't gotten into all those final details in the language of this MOU. That will come back in an ILA that we've discussed with the county in writing. So they're aware of it, and we are aware of it between correspondence with them.
And I believe that there will be a lot of details to be worked out, and there's a lot of terms. It's just this agreement does a lot of proactive, prospective language, and it doesn't fully do the lifecycle of the deconstruction or the closing out of the project and exit criteria by the county. And it doesn't have to be that detailed, but I just want to ensure for the town's future potential costs that the Wake County would agree to leaving the land as it was originally or as close to the equivalent as possible at their own expense and not the expense of the town. And I don't know if that is something we would need some legal guidance on, but I do think that we want to make sure that the county is going to pay for that and not the town.
Understood. So I'm not sure if I could look for some guidance from legal or not. I have an idea of what could be done, but I don't want to speculate.
Yeah. I don't know the...
For the audience, can you say what an ILA is? It's an inter-local agreement, and it's something common between two government agencies, so... So that's kind of the next step? That's where a lot of that gets worked out, kind of like... With our town center, there's different layers. And the next layer would be the appropriate place to be addressing that, perhaps? It would be, and we will... And that would also come back to council for approval as well as a special use permit and other permits that'll have to occur prior to even construction commencement of the Wake County. I don't know if that's given you any comfort. I completely understand where you're coming from, Councilmember. I'm just offering that information as a reminder.
Right. I just see that there is a lot of specific language about used construction and so forth. We are just leaving ourselves very open to potential future expenditures if we aren't a little more clear on how, who is responsible for restoring the site.
That's a very valid point. I'd like to recognize the town attorney at this time?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, in working on this with the town engineer, we all talk about it as an agreement, but really it's a memorandum of understanding, which is kind of like a nice handshake with a partner that we trust. And paragraph 2A says, "This MOU shall not impose obligations on either party to proceed with the solid waste facility project beyond this MOU." And then another paragraph says, "The county will comply with our unified development ordinance, which will require a special use permit for the solid waste facility." And you will recall, we went through that process when we thought the Fourth Amendment was in play.
Right.
And so that's a intense process and covers transportation, covers landscape buffering, covers any of those types of conditions you might want to put on the special use permit when it comes through the pipeline.
This is about recovery clause to making sure the town isn't liable at the end of this agreement for cleaning up of a facility that they didn't construct, design, or own or operate. And I think it's reasonable to be clear upfront that the county is responsible for, you know, cleaning up the site.
If... And I... You have extremely important and valid points. I'm gonna point you to one of the answers we provided. And this came from discussions, written discussions with the county. "Will there be any environmental concerns that need to be addressed considered if the convenience center is built at 404 Aviation Parkway that would hinder future use of the property?" And the answer from staff, which we collaborated with the county on this. "The design improvement of the convenience center will assure compliance with environmental laws and regulations. The ILA will address an operations plan for ongoing maintenance, cleanup, and abatement of any accidental spills or incidents, and site restoration requirements at the conclusion of the agreement." So that was our intent for that, just because it's part of the lease agreement that needs to occur and things like that. If you're not comfortable enough with that, I understand where you're coming from.
So the site restoration, the responsibility of Wake County, and it's clearly stated that way? Yeah. No, I mean, I just want to be very cautious because of, you know, the type of project that this is. And there is environmental risk because this is an environmentally sensitive area. And I don't want to hinder their project, but yet I don't want the long game to be a Morrisville challenge. Is, you know, as long as we have safeguards in place that are highlighted, that they're mindful of, and you build it in, hardcoded into this inter-local agreement, that will be okay. But I do want to raise a concern that we just want the town to be protected as a... The fact that we are not selling it, we are actually leasing it, we do... as a, um, the fact that we are not selling it, we are actually leasing it, we do hold some liability long-term.
Absolutely. Um, what I could offer is that it is a time-sensitive item, but they, they do have flexibility that they could move it to their September meeting date in the county's agenda.
I mean.
Uh, so if that makes you feel more comfortable from a council perspective, that we go back and have more discussions and make a little more clarification, I'd be happy to do that.
I, I just, I don't want to hold it up, but I do want to be very clear that this is a concern and, you know, we need to consider how we perceive of this project just to make, you know, the leases is the difference.
Yeah. I would gladly take that back to the coun- uh, county and, uh, you know, ensure that they're, they recognize that when we, we come back with the ILA, if that's not in there, we're not going to move forward. You know, that's the will of the council. So I just, it's not a problem bringing that information back to the county.
Very good. I appreciate that. I just wanted to share that concern that I have.
It's a valid, very valid concern.
Okay, great. I'm, I know that Liz wants to talk.
Thank you, Councilmember Scruggs Johnson. Councilmember Johnson, please. I'm no, please, I'm done.
Oh, okay. Um, so first of all, Mark, thank you for, um, the FAQ and the response to our questions. I, this was an issue I brought up at our last meeting, that the environmental concerns was, um, that needed to be addressed. And so, um, also the concern with the current site, how they clean that up. But, um, I, and so I too am deeply concerned and want to make sure that this doesn't fall on us, but falls on the right party to take care of any issues that may occur at the, the end of this agreement, um, whenever that is.
Understood.
Could be at the end of this lease or it could be additional forty years or whatever. So that's fine, but, um, I think the issue has been raised. Um, you have answered it really well in FAQ. Um, I'm comfortable that you brought it up with Wake County and, um, I'm also comfortable with the ILA will, um, inter-local agreement will detail even more specific. So I'm good. I don't, I, I'm okay. I don't need to, um, to wait and push us off again. Um, I do realize, and I want to thank the attorney for his explanation because this does not, this is not binding in any way tonight.
Right.
We have a long road to go before we agree. Um, and there are, there are multiple, um, votes that need to occur. So, um, I'm comfortable that we will get this worked out, that the issues have been raised. You've heard that multiple of us on council, I think probably all of us are concerned about the environmental issue and, um, comfortable that you're all gonna address it and make us, um, feel, um, comfortable in the future to, to move forward. So I appreciate the work that went into this and, and I'm good with voting on it tonight. I, I, I do realize that we, we've held Wake County up now because we have kind of switched gears in this whole process, which was important for the town of Morrisville and for the, the future of, um, for us. Um, so I, I want to, I want to be, be mindful of what this means to Wake County and not wait, um, any longer, but keep moving this, this forward now on this path that we're on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that was a really nice summary, so thank you for that. Um, would anyone like to make a motion and a second for the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion for the consent agenda, including item six A. I'll second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Scruggs Johnson. I have a motion, uh, second from Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing not that carries unanimously five zero. Thank you very much for this nomination. Thank you for the teamwork to keep us moving forward. Um, good concerns. Catching back up, we're heading to council and manager comments. Um, first I want to say that, uh, for future meetings, events and resident involvement opportunities, please see our town calendar at www.morrisvillnc.gov. Now we're on council comments. Councilmember Johnson will share first and I will be following her.
Uh, okay, well, so I, I just to, first I want to, um, say thank you to our new police chief Rossar. He, um, was at the Morrisville Senior Center today, meeting with the senior community. Um, he did an excellent job and he is following through on his commitment on the night he was sworn in, um, that he wanted to be engaged out in the community and meet with folks and he is following through and doing that. So I encourage, um, anybody in the audience or anyone that, that's listening, police chief would love to meet with you, with your organization, with your church, with your network, with your neighborhood. Um, and I would ask you to reach out to him. He's doing a great job and, um, I thank him for that. And then the, the second thing, and we're probably all going to say this, but Smoresville was fabulous this year. So I want to thank all those that probably, I think almost everybody who works in the town of Morrisville was there working in one capacity or another. But I have to give a shout out to my buddy, um, um, Michelle Putnam at the Morrisville Senior Center. She and I were, were, um, tag teaming, handing out, she was cooking the smores and I was handing them out. So, um, I want to give her kudos. She did a great job. And so thank you, but thank you to everyone, um, for all your hard work.
Okay. Uh, I'll go and then, um, Councilmember Fender from remote. Um, yeah, I was at Smoresville too and it was a lot of fun. I was right next to Liz handing them out and that was a really good time. Um, I wanted to also, when we were doing consent, I meant to recognize Mike Churney, who's our fire liaison to the CERT team and Stephanie Reed, one of the members of the CERT team are here. So to watch the MOU get approved and stuff as we move forward. So thank you for joining us this evening. And Chief Dooley is right behind us and it's really a fire department effort all through and through. Um, so I also wanted to say, uh, just my ongoing thanks to our staff, my fellow council members and the resident advisory committee members for their dedication to Morrisville. Uh, Councilmember Fender, it's your turn, followed by Councilmember Rao.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a public, uh, service announcement that COVID is, uh, out there. Um, and with school starting up, it probably will make matters worse. So, um, just know that it's, it's out and there's a new strain, um, being caught. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scruggs Johnson, please.
Well, I just wanted to say I'm bummed I missed, uh, Smoresville, but saw that all of you had a great time. Uh, and I had a great time in New York City, visiting, uh, Sonia, who's working there at the New York Times and got to go to a, yeah, my first Yankees game. But, um, I just wanted to take a moment to, to just, I'm saying that, uh, this week we'll be celebrating Indian Independence Day and I just want to wish all of our community a happy Indian Independ- Independence Day. It had, really has special meaning in Morrisville when India got its independence. I know Mayor Partem Garamella grew up in India and, um, is now doing great work here in Morrisville. But, um, I mean, the bottom line is I think it just really represents democracy, diversity, and inclusion. And so I'm looking forward to, um, you know, just, you know, meeting everyone in the community and, uh, want to thank our, our Asian community and our Indian American community for all their contributions. So, um, just wanted to say that for the record and I'm looking forward to a good rest of the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Scruggs Johnson, followed by Mayor Partem Garamella.
So I normally don't have comments, but this evening I would like to share something that, um, should resonate with most of us, if not all of us. Um, July twenty-sixth in Traverse City, Michigan, um, an individual, um, with a three-point-five-inch knife attacked eleven individuals, including a store employee and sent them to the hospital. Um, this was an unprovoked attack. There, the, um, the motive is not known, but what is known now, after looking at the situation, is this individual has had a series of mental health crises over their course of their life. And, um, the system, very fragile system, was unable to provide the support that they needed and there is still investigation ongoing. Your life can change in a minute and we need to make sure that our healthcare system, including the mental health, um, services are available to all in a timely way. And this will not only help the individuals, but the public at large. The situation is not unique to Traverse City, Michigan. However, um, it is something that we need to be mindful of. We need to help each other as much as we can. And most importantly, if something like this happens, we need to remain calm and level-headed. This attack was stopped by several individuals in a parking lot. One was a, um, a military veteran that was from the Marine Corps who had a concealed carry weapon that was able to, um, have this individual, um, secured without incident. There was no injury and no one lost their life. So I am from Traverse City, Michigan, so this was a shock. But the reason this happened, I believe, is because our healthcare system is not strong enough. And individuals will make decisions that may or may not be bad, but the, um, support is needed in Wake County and all over so that we can reduce the risks to the public. And, um, I'm happy to say that all of the individuals in the attack have been released. Um, and I wish them all a full recovery, but the area that this attack happened was in the self-checkout. And if anyone has been into Walmart, they know that the self-checkout is in kind of a reduced access point. So once you're in there, you can't, you can't run out. Um, you have to exit through the exit or you have to exit through the top of the queue. So those individuals that were attacked were essentially in that self-checkout area. So it's going to make me think about self-checkout in the future and where there are access points if something, um, unthinkable happens. Thank you all.
Thank you for sharing that. Mayor Partem Garamella, please.
I don't know a whole lot, but thanks for sharing and sorry for, any town, smaller vague affects everyone and the guards are always up, so, yeah, thank you.
Town manager Zudma, anything from staff this evening?
One quick note, and I'm going to turn to Kayla for a couple items. Um, just in case for those in the public that may not read the consent agenda, just wanted to clarify that we did cancel the August twenty-eighth work session. Uh, we did not have items that necessitated that meeting, so that's been updated on the, the website. Uh, we just wanted people to be able to hear that, uh, if they didn't pay attention to that consent agenda. And then I'm going to turn it to Kayla for a couple of quick items for you.
Good evening, council. Just a reminder for the additional ballot for the PZB alternate seat is due on Wednesday, August twentieth. That's next week. Um, additionally, proclamations, the reading order that we've been discussing over email. We're gonna, I'm going to send you additional communication about that. We're going to get through the rest of this year and then we'll come back with a new approach for next year. So just be on the lookout. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This time we're scheduled to take a ten-minute break and then we're going to go down to the table for our work session. Um, and actually, that's going to be closed sessions. So at this time, I would like to thank the audience for joining us this evening. We have no plans to do any public business after this break. Um, so please come and join us again. We'll be meeting again in two weeks. Um, and please check our calendar for upcoming events. We'll go into closed session after we come back from break. Please reconvene at the table at seven PM. Thank you all very much.